Next item on the agenda is item five point one. The presentation of art district concept by Phoenix Industrial Studios. Staff?
I love the Oma hallway, Phoenix Industrial Studio, to present the idea of art district. And success has been had.
May I please request accommodation for partial disability at Parkinson's and I won't be able to stand there and read my notes? Can I get the mic adjusted, please?
Yeah, of course. So can you help with the mic? She knows how it works more than I do.
If I could stand here and have the mic here, that would probably work. Perhaps a little closer? I mean, to the table. Yes, thank you very much. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So as I said, I have Parkinson's and so if I'm crossing my arms, I'm not trying to create distance, I'm trying to quiet the tremor. My name is Paul Kaye, I'm manager, designer and builder of Phoenix Industrial Studios. And what I'm proposing tonight, informally, not as a representative from the city of Phoenix, but as a general representative of business and better making of communities, is the Phoenix Town Arts District. And I'll give an argument, some arguments for why it's important and start with some conceptual recommendations. The conversation is just starting, this is again informal. I haven't made the same presentation to the city of Phoenix yet and will. I'm a member of the Bear Creek Highway ninety-nine revisioning community advisory committee and I'm proposing similar, the same information, the same advocacy. And so these ideas will be developed and revisited. At Phoenix Industrial Studios, we hosted an Earth Day celebration, on Earth Day, to acclimate people to the idea of parking remotely and coming to an event by public transit. So we hired the Jacksonville Trolley. And we were planning on maybe a hundred people, maybe two hundred people. And we wanted to practice this proof of concept of remote parking and transit and see if people would show up, along with other reasons for holding the event. Required two hundred hours of planning. We ended up having eight hundred and fifty, eight hundred people approximately. Hundred and fifty trolley rides, a hundred plates of food served by Garcia's Tacos, a hundred and fifty some odd scoops of ice cream by Harper's Ice Cream. The budget was, the expenses added up to about four grand, so not bad considering the number of people who showed up. And with about two hundred hours of planning, we had zero problems. And, and the, the trolley was very successful and there was a continuous stream of people all day long, coming on foot and on bike from the Bear Creek Greenway. The Phoenix Town Arts District. I'm going to make some proposals for infrastructure that have to do with parking and transportation and some proposals for planning that have to do with permissions and perpetuation of what we create. Let me make an argument for why it's important. From Washington DC Department of Planning, arts districts are identified mixed-use areas of the city in which high concentration of arts and cultural facilities serve as an anchor of attraction. The formation of such clusters by creating arts districts provides value to art patron and spurs creative collaboration among arts organization and artists. It can result in inventive artistic products as well as cost savings through shared facilities and/or shared administrative functions. Arts districts have an economic development value. Retail shops, restaurants and hotels find a steady, a ready market for their goods and services in arts district. More than ninety cities in the United States have planned or implemented such districts positioning the arts at the center of their urban revitalization efforts. From the Otis College Report in 2022 on the Creative Economy. Activities in production, this is California. Activities in production among the creative industries rely on interrelationships and supply chains throughout most of California's economy. When accounting for business-to-business transaction and spending by employees working in the five sectors, entertainment and digital media, fine and performing arts, architecture and related services, creative goods and products and fashion. The creative economy was responsible for a total value-added gross regional product impact of about seven hundred billion in 2020, roughly a quarter of the state's gross regional product. Directly employing almost one point four million people and supporting a total of about four million workers across the state, creative economy outperforms industry sectors such as government, manufacturing, healthcare and retail. Sectors that often receive greater economic development, talent development and policy support. For every hundred jobs in the creative industry sectors, an additional hundred eighty jobs are supported in other sectors. The economic activity, you'll like this, of the creative economy generated in California was worth over a hundred and twenty-two billion in taxes for all levels of government in 2020. In total, each job supported by the industry's activity resulted in over thirty grand in additional tax revenue. Third, the National Endowment for the Arts Bureau of Economic Analysis, How the Arts and Culture Sector Catalyzes Economic Vitality Report from 2021. Economic development is enhanced by concentrating creativity through both physical density and human capital. By locating firms, artists and cultural facilities together, a multiplier effect can result. The recognition of a community's arts and culture assets and the making of them is an important element of economic development. Creatively acknowledging and marketing community assets can attract a strong workforce and successful firms, as well as help sustain a positive quality of life. Arts and cultural activities can draw crowds from within and around the community, increasing the number of visitors as well as enhancing resident participation. Helps build economic and social capital. Planners can make deliberate connections between the arts and culture sector and other sectors such as tourism and manufacturing to improve economic outcomes by capitalizing on local assets. That's an abstraction, what do we do? City of Talent Comprehensive Plan. From the Transportation System Plan, the land use goal, encourage land uses that reduce reliance on single occupancy automobiles. An economic goal, build and maintain transportation system to facilitate economic development in the region. Bicycle goal, facilitate and encourage increased use of bike transportation in talent by ensuring convenient, accessible, safe cycling facilities are provided. Pedestrian goal, provide a comprehensive system with connecting sidewalks and walkways that will encourage and increase safe pedestrian travel. You know all that. More specifically, what's being proposed is our municipal parking lots where visitors will arrive in their personal automobiles or by bus or by bike. And then spend the day in the Phoenix Talents Arts District with a locally circulating small, a microbus if you will. With the Bear Creek Greenway as well as the Highway ninety-nine bike lanes as, as a, as a connection. So when you're here for the day between the two cities and the lands in between, you don't have to worry about going back to your car, you can get your stuff back to, back to your vehicle at the end of the day through a trolley ride or parcel service. So that's parking and transportation. Permissions. Live workspaces in particular for artists and artisans. I recommend a review of the Oregon Structural Specialty Code definitions and requirements of live workspace and the Talent Municipal Code definitions and requirements of live workspace. It doesn't create a conflict or an impossibility of compliance with both, but because they're not the same, it can create confusion. And to have, my understanding is you would like economic and construction development sooner rather than later. Having a streamlined, having things more understandable and more time efficient helps get buildings off the ground. You may also consider developing criteria for permissions so that it would lead to a type one review for live workspace for artisan artisans. In exchange, let me now go to. Within the city of Los Angeles, there's a promoting affordability through development of a range of live work unit sizes with covenanted affordable live work units. We create a great arts district, the artists come, they make the place fantastic and then they can afford to live here. So covenanted means protecting an affordable rental rate for a specific time period or a, in perpetuity. And, and so the city can create value by having streamlined permissions and that value earned is exchanged for long-term stability of the economic driver that makes the, contributes to making the place fantastic. Those are the concepts. I'm, I welcome your, your questions and, and criticisms and ideas and I hope it's the beginning of a conversation that will go somewhere and I hope it will go somewhere quickly so we can get some places built and artists inhabiting our beautiful towns. Do you have any questions or comments at this time?
Any questions or comments? Can I talk about them?
Yeah, so many really intriguing concepts of what you've said. I've heard a lot about some of these things, but not within the context of an arts district. So I'm very thirsty for more information on that. I, this is really a request, just some, some of you probably have links and things. I would, I would love if you could just email the entire council with perhaps just a list of resources so we can learn a little bit more about the background. And I, I personally would love to talk to you more about it. I just think it's a, it's a really wonderful concept to be brought up.
Thank you for your invitation. Tomorrow you will have an email with an attachment. Be careful because you're going to get what you asked. You will have some reading.
We love reading. I'm super excited to hear more about it as well. And, you know, it does, does help very well with some reading I'm doing on economic development from, from an offer, but somebody who's in economic development named Ivana Prius and it's Recast City. And it really talks about this type of micro enterprise as being, you know, part of a good city plan for sustainability. And it describes a lot of what you just said. Yeah, I would love to get that information as well and I'm hoping to connect with you soon and maybe talk about bringing our chambers together with the Talent Business Alliance and maybe some members of the Arts Committee and, and have a discussion about how we can level up this, this conversation.
That would be great. May I comment?
Please do.
Recast City. Reading that was very important in the formation of the, some of the design concepts of Phoenix Industrial Studios where Recast City is advocating for mixed-use industrial, usually tired city cores recasting the buildings that are not utilized or underutilized for mixed-use industrial purposes, which is a little different from our typical definition of mixed use. And the diverse light industrial economic base. And putting in a production place, art and artisans is a fantastic combination as, as we've demonstrated. And I want to share that with you.
I'm glad to hear that you read it. I have to say that when I, when I wax poetic about Recast City, I point to your building all the time.
One of the names toyed with was Recast Phoenix. It's not going to mean anything to anybody else, so it's only a rhetoric.
Councilor Clark?
Yeah, I really appreciate you coming and giving this presentation to us tonight and for the work that you're doing on, you know, envisioning a beautiful future for our communities. And, and really appreciate your participation in the Highway ninety-nine revisioning committee as well. Really excited to see what comes out of that process. This is a real opportunity for us to open some doors to going in a really beautiful and creative community building direction. And, you know, what you've shared with us tonight fits, fits right for that. So appreciate your presentation and look forward to, you know, talking about next steps and go forward.
Thank you. And I invite you, any and all, to come knock on my door and get a backstage tour of the infrastructure and the water systems if you would like such a thing.
I have it very cool. Well worth it. And I got, I saw Paul out trench jeans from me the other day because they're putting a bike repair shop close to the runway. And so I'm excited, the continued development of what you guys are doing is very inspirational.
Thank you.
You have a living roof too, I believe, right?
Pardon me?
You have a living roof on that building as well, don't you?
The porch roofs of the buildings are wetland roofs. They are ballasted with three or four inches of peat gravel and they're planted with eighteen different species, about a thousand seedlings each porch of native wetland plants. And, and they're irrigated and there are about three or four species that like that environment and, and the others ran away. And we provided that for habitat and beauty and evapotranspirative cooling or thermal regulation would be another term. Incidentally, it probably saved our buildings from igniting during the Almeida fire. The plants were scorched, but the porches did not ignite. Before I leave, I just wanted to thank you for your efforts of volunteering to make our communities better.
Any more to talk about?
Thank you very much.
So the next item on the agenda is item number six, it's a public hearing, item five point one, staff report. I know it's my turn to read the things. Okay. The Talent City Council has the authority to hold legislative hearings in accordance with Oregon legal heating laws and describes the orders one nine two point six one zero through one nine two point seven one zero. The Talent City Council makes the final decision to approve, modify or deny. The city planner has determined that the approved criteria that apply to the following application or issue currently before the city council, far as follows.
Talent Municipal Code Title eighteen. Talent Comprehensive Plan Element A, Citizen Involvement Element C, Natural Hazards. Oregon Land Use Planning Goals, one, citizen involvement, goal two, land use planning of seven areas subject to natural disasters and hazards. Oregon Administrative Rules six six zero zero one eight zero zero two zero.
Evidence and testimony in this hearing must be directed towards these criteria or other criteria in the city zoning code, comprehensive plan, subdivision code, or other applicable land use and development-related regulations that the person will need to apply to the decision. Filing to raise an issue with sufficient clarity and detail to afford the decision maker and the parties, an opportunity to respond accordingly to the issue concludes appeals to the Oregon Land Use Board of Appeals on that issue. Before the end of the hearing, any participant may request a continuance. In addition, whether or not there is a continuance, a participant may request that the record be of the proceeding remaining open for at least seven days after the hearing. The city council will consider whether or not they will continue the hearing or leave the record open for the specified length of time for new written testimony or evidence. When called to speak, please come to the microphone and state your name and residential address for the public record. Please direct your comments to the applicable criteria as identified by city staff. The following time limits are awarded for public testimony. Applicant fifteen minutes, individual five minutes, and individual representing a group ten minutes. Applicant rebuttal, rebuttal ten minutes. After listening to testimony and considering the evidence, the city council may vote to approve, approve with conditions or deny the application unless the matter is continued or tabled to another date specifically named. If you, if you have questions or do not understand the procedure, please raise your hand and ask them now. All right.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Tonight, we're here to consider the City of Talent Planning Commission's recommendation for approval of the Flood Damage Prevention Code, chapter fifteen point fifteen. The amendments are basically to better reflect our Oregon National Flood Insurance Program Model Code. The amendments are designed to promote public health and safety and minimize loss due to flooding in the flood hazard areas. This came about in late two, twenty twenty-two, this code amendment. The City of Talent had an audit by our FEMA representative, which is, we have, I think we have an annual or a two-year audit. They audited us to better manage our floodplain properties. We actually went out to all the different floodplain properties within Oak Valley, Old Bridge, Willow Springs. And in addition to those sites and those, our floodplain documentation, they asked that we also amended our flood code, chapter fifteen point fifteen, and made some suggestions for that. The, the local governments, as you well know, in which the City of Talent participates in the National Flood Insurance Program, we do that in order to, in exchange, FEMA offers us flood insurance to our property owners and renters. This code specifically is based on the Oregon National Flood Insurance Model Code to promote our public health and safety. The code changes that you see before you tonight, I'll briefly go over very, very briefly, it has to do with our definitions of the floodplain, the duties of the floodplain manager and how our city documents a floodplain management, properties. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. It was pretty, pretty model code.
I have a quick question. By model code, you mean code that's provided by FEMA?
Yes, it's provided by the National Flood Insurance Program. So everything that we, they asked that we reflect that code, FEMA does.
Any other questions? Pretty straightforward, I think we have a pretty good history and record with this. We do and we want to continue. Thank you for your work. So if there's no questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion. Oh, that's right, I'm sorry. So at this time, I'll open the public hearing. And are there any speaker request forms on this item, which is six point five? All right. Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. Sorry about that. And. Any comments or questions before I entertain a motion? Seeing none? Is there a motion?
And, Mayor, I have a request to fill my reading out loud the full ordinance title towards having a motion just to be about a title, right? Or sorry, ordinance title, right?
Can we make sure I have it? No.
This is ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash nine seven nine dash oh. Ordinance amending ordinance sixteen dash nine sixteen dash uh, zero. Talent Municipal Code amending Title fifteen, Buildings in Construction. Section fifteen dot fifteen, Flood Damage Prevention. This ordinance amends TMC fifteen dot fifteen, Flood Damage Prevention to align with the model code from Oregon National Flood Insurance Program, which is intended to promote public health, safety and general welfare as well as minimize losses due to flooding and flooding hazard areas.
Can I add anything? Yes. I'll entertain a motion. Uh, Councilor Clark?
I move to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-three dash nine seven nine dash oh.
Is there a second? Second. We have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-three dash nine seven nine dash oh. Councilor Clark, direct your speech to your motion.
I support it.
Any other deliberation? Seeing none? Is this a roll call? I think it is. Roll call, please?
Councilor Clark?
Yes.
Councilor DeMarra?
Yes.
Councilor Tori Cesar?
Yes.
Councilor Fernanda?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Kristen. Appreciate your hard work. Um, next item on the agenda, item seven point one, city manager report.
That? Great. So the whole report was just to share with you all next steps given the votes that occurred of the mayoral special elections. I would say the rest will not be enough for this week or twenty-fourth, but it's our main focus as well as wrapping up the hearing recording to keep a lot of breaks that are ending before thirty. That and then looking through our homework directory last day is next Tuesday. So just figure out what information we have in the draft. I will jump into six point two, urban remodel activities, just to share with you all. Urban remodel not be made with the budget committee did as approved for budget, so that budget hearing mature will occur June thirteenth during the mayoral voting session.
Need to touch base really quickly on the progress of the rent for tour. Are we, are we getting any applications yet?
We would like to get some many applications. That was great when we shared through the public room, tour to start a up to fifteen thousand dollar break for businesses or commercial properties to do improvements to the building. So we're currently accepting applications for that and hope to get some money to support our local businesses. And that's within the current urban remodel district in that we just primarily downtown.
Okay. All right, great. Thank you so much. So with that, go ahead and move to the consent calendar. Has everybody had a chance to review all the consent counter items? And is there anything from the consent calendar that you want to throw out for the special? Seeing none? I'll entertain a motion. Councilor Paranoid?
I move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
Do you have a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar? Is there, if you want to speak to your motion? Any discussion? Seeing none? All those in table, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next item on the agenda, it's unfinished business, nine point one, consideration of parks, community recommendation to adopt Lindsay Green Park Landscape Design. Is that?
Yes, we're fortunately opposed this landscape design.
Yes, we're fortunately opposed this landscape design concept. If it led into the Parks Commission, their last meeting, Parks Commission demands we're allowed to approve design concept. So coming before you, let's be counsel for finding a loophole. Staff comments on this? Our only recommendation is to relocate two trees directly behind the dumpster because they, just to give a little bit more space to septic paint fracture to prevent any root complications in the future.
Counselor Pernod?
Jordan, are those the green trees on that side or is it the red tree side? I can't remember which side the entrance is.
I know, I feel very first, but I don't remember either. I believe the green trees are on the back and the red ones are where the entrance is. But either way, when you go to implement it, you will master the septic paint clear. That's the entrance. I believe so. Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
My last one, I will say is for implementation of this design concept. We are planning on planting the trees using our web grant that we have in this upcoming proposed budget, which will have my aid in there to install a permanent irrigation system that helps support those trees in the future landscaping meetings.
Any questions about that? All right. I'll entertain a motion. Counselor Clark.
I move to adopt a landscape design concept for a new park.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the landscape design for Little Green Park. Is there any, excuse me, Counselor Clark, do you wish to speak to your motion?
Yeah, this is just, this is going to be the next in line or one in line of a bunch of high-impact projects made possible by this web grant, and I really appreciate the old work that city staff have put in making this possible.
Great. Anything else? Any further deliberation? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? If you care. Item 10.1 is a discussion on the rebuild policy regarding timeframe for allowing non-conforming structures related to rebuild. Staff report?
Great. Mayor, I'm going to go ahead and give a brief summary of this other item, and then I will have a Christmas Day present to get any details folks might have questions about. So we've been in this discussion for several months now. The discussion is if we would like to make changes to our code to address what happens when a non-conforming structure, for example, a single-family home in a high-density area, is destroyed. What time period, do we want them to be built in the same way that they were before and for what time period? During this conversation, we've had a lot of research into different approaches, different things. To be counsel, as given the direction that you are interested in allowing, we look not conforming for a certain time period where the point of discussion is, how long should that time period be? In doing this digging, I know sometimes pain-staking digging, particularly by a day-holdman, we have found legislation that was passed at the state level that will override whatever we pass if it's specific to the Alameda Fire rebuild. So if a non-conforming structure was burnt down in the Alameda Fire or any 2020 labor day fire, that structure can rebuild to its non-conforming standards up until September 30, 2020. So that is, just to be really clear, the code we're adopting will not be applied to Alameda Fire rebuild or rebuild needs to the future. And so what we're putting after research as well as talking to folks who have experienced the loss of their homes and rebuild progress, if we're recommending and summarizing the slides above you, some changes to our code that would allow rebuilding for up to a two-year period. The assignment period is applying for building permit within two years. There are some other recommended benchmarks that are around it. One, totally do it for deliberate loss, I'm sorry, not deliberate loss of the non-conforming structure. That reconstruction should not exceed 10% of what the original spirit of the structure was or 10% of what was covered by the building foreman on the land and making sure it applies with all other standards outside of some of the plans. There is a clause in there, we did say, you know, this is a code that we're designing specific to most common scenario, which is the loss of a house or house by loss of a few houses due to a flood damage, for example. But we know Alameda Fire, there's always exceptions to the most common scenario. And so there is a clause that we're recommending that would allow us, the manager, to extend the application deadline upon determining that that extension warranted by unforeseen circumstances. So that's escape clause going without a large flood that really happens. So with that, I'm going to offer you for questions, and I will stay and continue to help provide clarifications.
Counselor Pernod.
Thank you. Regarding the city manager being able to override that could also be applied on a case-by-case basis as well. Okay, thank you. I think that's important. I think we have come into situations where a person just isn't able to respond to a situation because of, you know, devastating family circumstances or something like that. So this kind of escape clause for the city manager to have discretion could apply to a case for him ritual or for a case like a large-scale disaster. Although I would probably start that state legislature step in as they did with this one and that kind of thing. So I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
On that topic, I've actually had a chance to chat with Jordan about this piece as well. And one of the things that I suggested is that with that, that there be some criteria to work from. And just that with staff making land use decisions, that they're working on criteria. It's basically what the conversation boiled down to. I don't know that it would, I don't know how difficult it would be to come up with that criteria. I should design that criteria, because honestly, when I think about it, I can't think of, you know, how do you design that criteria? Because every, it's true, every situation is a different type of scenario. But I would hope at minimum there would be some language that if it gets to a certain point of complication, that goes to the planning commission for decision. And so we're going to be directing staff tonight to prepare a proposed ordinance. Yeah. And I wonder if I could invite staff to consider that and I'm going to try to add some of that language in there. If you want to take stuff out. And then I was going to ask, does this ordinance, this proposed ordinance, they go to the planning commission before it comes here?
Okay.
So anyway, I make that recommendation unless there's objections to that. There's objections to that.
Mayor, certainly not an objection. I think it may be difficult to come up with a criteria. We can make an effort at it. And all the, in all the ordinances for other cities that are similar to this, I have not come across any, any situation where they try to set out the criteria just because the whole point is, when there's an odd situation, it's odd because you don't, it doesn't fit criteria. But we'll make an effort at it and bring it back.
Yeah, it's funny. I've been in planning for so long, and it struck, it struck me as odd that that, that that discretion wouldn't have been prescribed to the, to the planning commission. And I don't have any real heartburn about it because we're in an era right now where land use in Oregon is all about clear objective criteria and staff making those decisions. So it makes sense to me that we would approach it that way. So I just think it's worth taking a stab at minimum if there, and you know, it might not work out. It might look like this, and it might make no sense at all. But if there's, if there's any room for that, and if it, you know, again, if there's a lot of complexity, that there will be a pressure about that, around the planning commission.
There's always the appeal, a person that appeals to the planning commission if they're not happy with the city manager's decision. So that's always an option.
That's right.
So we have that in our code. So if the city manager read the decision and they were happy, they could always appeal that and say, these are the reasons that we wanted, that we need these.
It looks like we would probably ramp in the extension. Right. Yeah. So is that, that appeal process is for the applicant? Yeah, we just see the applicant would appeal the decision. Well, normally, you would appeal the decision of the planning director or community building director, but I suppose they could appeal. So my question would be, could the planning commission appeal it? The planning commission appeal a decision made by the city manager? Right. By staff?
Yeah. It would probably come to the city council and the city body.
Yeah. So maybe if we just, if there's no, if there's no clear objective criteria to come out here, maybe, maybe the alternative is to just outline that process.
Counselor Dizel?
I'm just curious, is either the initial process to get an extension or is there a charge for the applicant to do that?
Probably not to planning commission. We would just allow them to, we would just bring it up for planning commission. But we do have an appeal for planning commission. We do have a cost. So yeah, that way, then we start, then we start charging for that two-year period. And putting that, adding that staff time. So yeah, we would probably charge, I guess.
I'm just thinking that, you know, somewhere in the tradition, in the need for extension, the financial part could be a challenge, this part why there was an extension and that just adding more burden.
Yeah, and I, you know, really, another thought that I have, and accepting the company we're in, not every city manager has as much land use experience as others do. So there's, you know, that has crossed my mind, and that's, you know, the planning commission is, you know, this is, this is a legacy decision, right? It'll go on beyond probably all of us and Well, the decision is normally made by the planning director. Right. Yeah. With criteria. Yeah. So that's, that's really, yeah, that's really what I'm looking for, so.
All right? Is there anything else?
Okay, so we need a motion to direct staff. Anybody want to take a stab at?
Counselor Pernod?
I move to direct staff to prepare an ordinance with the proposed amendments to the Talent Municipal Code, Chapter 18.195, Non-Conforming Uses, Lots, and Structures, with changes as discussed.
We have our motion and a second to prepare an ordinance with the proposed amendments to the Talent Municipal Code, Chapter 18.195, Non-Conforming Uses, Lots, and Structures, with changes as discussed. Is there any, excuse me, Counselor Pernod, do you wish to speak to your motion? None. None. Any other deliberation? Seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? If you care.
Yeah, quick, I'll take the be honest speaker request.
Oh, we did. Gosh, I'm not on my name planning. So can I call Rebecca Ford and state your name and your city for the record?
Okay. And I have to wear a mask tonight. I apologize. I'm Rebecca Abate, and I live on Arnold's Road since 1995, before the Alameda Fire. And I did try to speak via Zoom a couple of meetings ago. And I, I just want to present from a long, personal perspective, from a longtime resident. Both my neighbor and I, we have four empty lots still around us on Arnold's Road. My young neighbor's still fighting, as you probably know, the 461, three-story, 11-unit apartment complex right in front of his flag lot. And looking through this, you know, we use the words nonconformity. Living there for 25 years, raising my three children as a single parent, small home, the whole street before it was demolished was single-family dwellings on that side, between 99 and Talent Avenue. If you look above, a lot of it's still medium density where no homes were destroyed. And my plight, my discouragement, along with my neighbors, is that it is listed here in 2019, the City of Talent adopted the zoning. It was a proposal. It was approved six months after the fire, before we rebuilt. I was down at the planning commission, paying my $9,000 in permits. If I could have been handed a letter, you know, we may have been very ignorant in many ways, but it's very cruel when we're trying to rebuild, and we're still trying to rebuild. And you bring up this, what we just discussed. My neighbor still doesn't have money, and we're two, we're going to be three years this September. Our house is still not painted, but our house is going to be surrounded by apartments. I would not have built if I would have had a letter, if somebody said, this is okay if you rebuild here. But just so that you're made aware, in 2019, that proposed amendment for rezone has now been passed six months later, which is when I was down at the planning commission. So not to, it's just, my neighbor here has health issues. Her husband just had surgery. She's lived there since 1989. And so I am not against public housing or more housing. We've got apartments, you know, one street over that were houses before. But to put a three-story apartment complex right in the middle of a street that was all single-family dwelling, and at the meeting that I couldn't speak at, someone said, well, they shouldn't have bought there if they didn't want to live in a high-density resident. It wasn't high-density when we bought there. It was all single-family dwellings in 1995. So a lot of us didn't pay a lot of attention in 2019 when the density, the high density from medium density was proposed. But this statement says that it went through and that these homes were nonconformity. It went through six months after the fire. So as you can tell, I'm worked up. I've had a long workday. You know, us that work, you know, trying to rebuild. When this went through, I still, my husband still doesn't have a social security card. We still don't have our marriage certificate. We lost everything, as some of you may have. But again, I'm not, not for, I'm not against trying to make the city better and having more affordable housing. But what the City of Talent did to the fire victims between 99 and Talent Avenue, to me, is criminal. That's all I can put it, and should have been illegal. It should have been, let's rebuild on that street what it was before the fire until it's rebuilt. You know, like you're proposing two years, three years. And I hope that it's made clear to some of my neighbors that haven't rebuilt that there's an exception for Alameda people. Because I know my one neighbor, she was a single, single mom, and she hasn't even started to rebuild. She's struggling. And a lot of people are struggling with depression. I believe my husband has post-traumatic stress, you know. And I just want the city to know that they really put us in a bind. And it's very disheartening because I raised my three kids there. And for us, all we want to do is paint our house and sell. And our house isn't going to be worth what it would have been if we are buried. It's a flag lot. You know, so I have no qualms in saying, we're in a flag lot just like my neighbor that's fighting this 461 right for his flag lot. I don't want to be surrounded by apartments. I wouldn't have bought the little house there in 1995. And so someday, I may be wanting in a condominium or an apartment. But, you know, we talk about planning. You know, when you're, when you build a house, you have the bathroom in a good spot. You know, you have apartments on a certain street. You don't have an apartment, a house, you know, apartment. And so that's all I have to say is that some of this wording, non-conforming code, it wasn't non-conforming till six months after the fire. And that's what's upsetting, discouraging, and some of us downright want to give up, you know. And that's, that's really all I have to say is, I wanted to speak via Zoom and I, you, I sent that petition out, and somebody on the Zoom and I, you, I sent that petition out and somebody on the board even questioned the petition and, uh, you know, I went home at ten o'clock that night after a long work day, so just speaking for my neighbor, lived there since nineteen eighty-nine, lost her mother, lost her sister, you know, not from the Almeida fire, and then the Almeida fire, and recently lost their best friend, my husband's best friend too, and for us to be fighting this battle where what's our house gonna be worth? And simple, go ahead and build, but here's a letter, just so you know, if you build, it's now zoned, you're the only person that can build a house there, how hard is that? In Portland, they send you letter after letter after letter, a dental patient told me that, you know, we weren't, like I said, maybe I even said to my neighbor, did you get a letter, you know, about this? And, and I researched this, this was not amended in twenty nineteen, it was proposed amendment. And you, I don't know who passed it, but it was March or April of twenty twenty-one. And like I said, we were still rebuilding, we were still, you know, that's when we had people clearing our land, looking for my wedding ring, I mean, it's not like we're gonna look, you know, that you put on the internet, it is now rezoned. That's all I have to say, thank you for your time.
Thank you, and I, I want to apologize for missing your speaker request form at the right time.
That's okay.
Yeah, and, and just know that, um, this item is gonna come back to us because all we did tonight was direct staff to draft a ordinance, so if you, if, if I, excuse me, if I, um, uh, robbed you of your opportunity by being late, excuse me, my allergies. You know that it's gonna come back and, and we can speak on it again if you wish.
Thank you, you didn't rob me of an opportunity, it's just been a long day, I have allergies too, so.
Yeah, and I appreciate, you know, I, I have allergies and identity as well and appreciate your comments.
Well, um, Mr. Martin just wrote an article and I called him, I said, there's so much inaccuracy in this article and it was about another, um, resident in Talent that bought a lot to build a single-family dwelling and is now upset because he has to build an apartment. And mine's the other perspective where we should have been warned, I would have rather had an empty lot sitting and starting over, like some people I know, uh, not three years later. All we want to do is move, but we're surrounded by weeds and empty lots. And we have to tell somebody if they look at our house, it's now, we have to fairly and honestly, it's now high-density, you know, you may get apartments, that's, that's all I'm gonna say, because I want out of there. So where do I be honest and get out of here and have gained back what we lost? Thank you for your time.
I appreciate your comments. Item ten point two is an update on the Hardest Festival planning staff.
Yeah, I'll go with the, the quick summary here is, uh, I just made a little faster. Um, Congress Festival planning is underway, um, the city, oh, you've already got, um, center. Had to log that, oh, you can pull my back, I was trying to.
Staff report is in front of you, it's an update on the Hardest Festival. As you can see, um, behind you, this is the updated logo with the current year, twenty twenty-three. We're gonna use the same logo and same color scheme for at least two or three years to save on that cost, uh, but it does give continuity from year to year. Staff report in front of you, if you have any questions, I'm here to answer them.
Thank you, Kristen. Any comments or questions? Thank you, Hector.
Thank you, I just want to add, we're really excited to have Heather Lee on staff through Rob Works Office.
The next item on the agenda is ten point three, which is request for council discretionary funds from city manager to participate in the American Leadership Forum. It's down the board, sorry.
No, I'm looking. Um, so I have been nominated and selected to participate in the American Leadership Forum, which is a statewide, it's nationwide, but the working chapter, a statewide leadership program, with the idea that they're giving leaders from across the state together, across from first Oregon, to discuss some more fun issues that are all amazing. The idea being it's professional development for means individual, but also creates connection to me so that when we're working through things here and how this group can call on across the state to help raise or implement ideas. Um, I am wondering about if you might have received a scholarship to be able to attend this program, uh, but we do ask that all disciplines request from their organizations, um, some of the organizational funds have offset costs with it. Um, if the City of Talent does decide to allocate any funds for conservation program, we'll do as little free scholarship funds for other use for future years because it will not need to apply to me. And I will say we do have a witness in our midst here, Dave Lemon was a participant at winner of leadership forum and he can provide some, uh, share of background for any questions around the program, what's about and how it has served or not served again.
So without further questions, we leave you back.
Something going on?
Yeah.
We haven't talked about this, I didn't. I, I was, uh, one of the early participants, this, what there is is a cohort each year, uh, and I don't know what the numbers are anymore, it's about twenty-five people, I think, um, and, uh, it is a great opportunity for making connections across the state and, um, and the, it's not just that year, uh, that we work with this group of folks, but, um, there's a, a program, an ongoing program for all years, um, of these classes and you get to know people, um, all over the state, from, you know, all ages and all core classes. It really is a great opportunity, I think, for the city, uh, to have somebody who's got connections all over the state and can make use of, come back to the city.
One of the things that I noticed about your proposal, Jordan, is, um, it, um, it sort of mixes the idea that, um, this is to support your, um, your professional development, but it looks like what it really does is it's a contribution to this organization for future, um, for future participants, so we're not necessarily contributing to your, um, development, uh, that has already been given as a scholarship, but really looking at participating in an organization that helps develop a pipeline of leadership in our state.
I would, yes, I'm sure, but when you go to people go to my tuition, which will then free up scholarship that I received, I assume you know.
Okay, that clarified it for me, I, I felt like there were mixed messages there, but I think, yeah, okay. Any comments or questions? And, um, so with that then, if, it is part of professional development, do you, I, I see you don't have, I asked you earlier if there was professional development funds left and you said that was twelve fifty left?
Oh, sorry, per my contract, uh, I may have spent twelve fifty for my professional development, um, in the staff report for you all is additional funds available for travel and training, which is where we do professional development for the rest of staff as well as council discretionary.
So I don't think I understood that.
Um, so the twelve, there is twelve hundred fifty dollars, uh, that can be spent on my professional development every, per my contract.
Right.
Um, those would be asking for funds above that twelve fifty?
In addition to that twelve fifty?
Yeah.
Because you're using that twelve fifty for this?
Uh, yes.
Got it, okay. And just out of curiosity, how long does that renew? Is that renewed at your contract time? Like, if.
It was just a one-time twelve hundred fifty dollar.
Okay, well, let's, let's remember that. Um, because it, it appears that professional development always got a good use. Yeah. Um, okay, any other questions? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion. Mayor, Councilor Perry, move.
I move to approve two thousand seven hundred twenty-eight dollars from city staff training funds and two thousand two hundred and seventy-two dollars from council discretionary funds for the participation of the city manager in the American Leadership Forum Fellowship Program.
There's a motion on the table to approve two thousand seven hundred twenty-eight dollars from the city staff training funds and the remaining balance from the discretionary funds, um, for, uh, for the participation of the city manager in the American Leadership Forum Fellowship Program. Is there any further discussion?
Yeah, uh, just, uh, the, so the total is intended to be five thousand dollars.
Yeah, I, the remaining balance of five thousand, that's right, I just didn't write down, why don't you give it to me and I'll just say for the record?
Two thousand two hundred and seventy-two dollars, if I can do math, which I tried.
Two thousand two hundred and seventy-two dollars. Okay, so let me, let me start, um, there's a motion and a second on the table to approve two thousand seven hundred twenty-eight dollars from the city staff training fund and two thousand two hundred and seventy-two dollars from the, um, council discretionary funds for the participation of the manager in the American Leadership Forum Fellowship Program. Do you wish to speak to your motion?
Just that this seems like a very exciting opportunity and I wish we'd all go with you.
Any other deliberation? All right, uh, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, please say goodbye. Please say, all right, the motion goes. Any, any opposed, please say goodbye. Please say, all right, the motion goes. Item ten point four, council rules. The vastness is on the agenda. Um, and before we jump into this conversation, I just want to make a commitment that we have this conversation without, um, making any personal comments about any of the speakers as well, so, um, I, um, I've had an opportunity, really for the second time, to talk to our city attorney, I think the first time I talked about it was in a meeting, I mean, a little month ago, um, and, um, just regarding, um, decorum and what we can allow and what we don't have to allow, um, when we take speaker requests from them. And I, I, Dave, I hate to spin this on you, but are you, do you have, are you prepared to kind of speak on the item, I think we had a chance to talk about it outside a little bit, can you kind of give, um, some points about this or if not, we can just carry on with the discussion and ask questions? I know you've given training on it as well in the city.
Right, uh, mayor, you're a member of the council, um, I don't have any specifics to suggest, uh, the, of course, the city, um, charter, uh, gives the, um, the mayor the function of, among other things, preserving order and ensuring that council rules are observed. Council rules themselves, uh, say that the, um, council and the mayor are to help preserve the decorum during meetings. And I think what has happened in a lot of cities, uh, in Oregon and elsewhere over the last few years, is that general, um, authority given to the mayor hasn't been enough and there have been instances, um, in other cities where it's been very difficult to, to continue normal business meeting. And, uh, there have been, uh, rules adopted in a number of cities to try and address them. I haven't done a lot of research on those, but I'd be happy to do that and bring back, bring back some of the ideas to you. The essential question is how detailed do you want to get? And, uh, of course, in the past, we've been able to just say you've got responsibility for preserving the decorum and, uh, we need to get more detailed than that, it appears. How detailed will be something that you'll have to think about. Would ask a question, why do you, another issue that has come up in a number of cities is outside of meetings, uh, comments by people, particularly on social media, whether that's an issue that you want to address or not, it's a very difficult issue to come up with anything meaningful on, um, but it has been a problem in other cities. And in particular, where the council makes a decision and the member of the council on social media, uh, um, effectively undermines that decision. And there are, there are examples of, of ways to address that where there has been a clear council decision, you may want to think about that as well. But I'll bring back that and some other items and, you know, we can kick around with it next week.
I really do appreciate, um, the comment about undermining, um, the decision of the council, um, it is, it's not just on social media, you know, our, our council was making clear that once the council decision is made, that we uphold that, um, decision as a, as a, as a group, um, as a, you know, I, I can't remember the language, but it's, um, it's, it specifically addresses that, so I wouldn't mind leaving that, um, as, as part of this. You know, here's, here's, um, why I want to address this, I've recently had several councils either pull me aside or call, call me or send me information about just how disruptive it can be to our, to our business and how exciting it is and how distracting it is to open our meeting with that kind of, um, that kind of, uh, abuse? Abuse. Um, and so, um, you know, I just want to, uh, look at what are, I'm a, I'm a rule follower as much as I can remember as I'm, as I'm proceeding and, and having rules that I can lean on instead of some sort of arbitrary, um, decision, even though I know, right, as presiding officer, I have some of that authority, uh, I, I like to have a little bit of clarity on, on what, what I can relate to or what I can refer to, so, um, if the council doesn't object, I, I would like to ask the staff to work on that a little bit and let us council, uh, let us, um, bring that back to an agenda, uh, as an agenda item and, uh, yeah, and, and discuss amending the rules, come up with something that's meaningful.
In the meantime, just so, um, so you know, under Robert's rules, um, there's also responsibility to the presiding officer to maintain decorum and, um, if the presiding officer determines that the decorum is not being preserved, the presiding officer can, um, make a point of order, um, and, uh, and a, a lot of, a lot of councils don't recognize that possibility. If the council doesn't like the, 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 uh, point of order, they have an opportunity to overturn it, to vote on it. So there's a democratic process for dealing with, uh, a point of order that we, whether it's provided by the, by the presiding officer or anybody else, uh, there's an opportunity to overturn it if you don't like it and that's a democratic process. But, um, it, it's very possible, even under the sort of broad languages that we have now about preserving decorum, um, for, um, the council, uh, presiding officer or anybody else to make a point of order, since, to say that this presentation is now at a point where it is disrupting decorum.
Great. Councilor Lawrence?
Uh, thank you, um, so it's my understanding that the state law does not require that we allow public comment, that what it requires is that, um, that our discussion is, is being public, but as you said, our city charter does require that we allow public comment, so, um, I think that's, that's an important distinction. I was kind of, I was also interested in, in having read, read about the state law of the, um, ability to prevent the attendance of people who are repeatedly disruptive. of the ability to prevent the attendance of people who are repeatedly disrupted. It seems like there's rather a high bar for that, that you can't relay. So you certainly can't ban people, um, but you can, you know, keep them out for a limited period of time. I'm not su, I think my understanding from the reading is that bar is very high, but I, I appreciate just your, your thoughts on that issue in this research if, if that, you know, because if it becomes habitual, um, it might be nice to uh, uh, that distraction if possible.
And I'll remember the point of order moving forward. I, uh, I honestly, I'm in my third term and this is the first time we've really had just repeating disruption and um, and so I've never had to address this issue before. Um, so I will uh really appreciate having this feedback, so I'm going to lean on and uh, and I'll try to be more cautious in using point of order moving forward. So I look forward to that information. Is there any other um comments or suggestions? Jordan, you, you don't need a motion to direct staff on this?
No.
All right, so we'll see it on a future agenda?
Right.
Um, okay, uh, with that then, we're going to move to item number eleven, uh, which is commission and, you know what, I do want to add to that. I would like also review um, uh, written communications on uh, the, the council With the uh objective of not, um, yeah, just making sure that decorum is also managed in that realm as well, if that's, uh, if that's possible. Um, all right, so um, if, uh, let's see, the next item on the agenda is committee and commission reports. Are there any committee and commission reports? What's happening on the committee and commission level? Counselor Perry?
Um, the town public affairs committee has continued to meet multiple times a month and uh, they just submitted their budget for this year, which I'm assuming we will go through when council excited for budget.
Okay.
Uh, and they are also continuing to work on their goal setting for a larger five to seven year period, um, and that is going very well. And that's it. Oh, and we also, we do have one vacancy, but we're about to hopefully go through the process of filling that.
Great. Anybody else? Counselor Clark?
Well, um, yeah, uh, heard before a street event we meet last week, but three weeks ago they um, they met and discussed uh goals for the community. That's Jordan.
Great, I've heard feedback again this year about that. Thank you, Jordan, for, for making that up. Anybody else? I just want to mention that recently we had a planning meeting where Dave attended and, and helped um smooth out um our processes and, and how it's seen an impact. Um, it is always a work of process, but um, it made a difference. Thank you, Dave, for your time. Jordan?
And just to remind everyone, we are going to send out a notice through the May thirty-first chair of summit for commission meeting chairs and encourage all commission meeting members to come then. Um, we have that safety effects training at that meeting.
The appointment training. Okay. Um, next item on the agenda is other business or future agenda items. Anybody? Counselor Clark?
Yeah, I want to um raise a point that came up in um, the budget committee meeting regarding um irrigation, the water replanting and um, it was requested by some members of that committee that would be beneficial to have um, a rough cost estimate of what that, uh, what those costs may come to and I am wondering if uh, staff could produce such an estimate, even for just some key, um, you know, key obvious areas where we will need that um support of our department.
Yeah, we can make an effort to get those estimates. You know, it's hard because those estimates are also dependable and we're even, we'd have to lose without that versus prior property owners, um, to go to our best to see, but I think it, to the foreword is more already a party in segments and parts rather than completely.
Right. Yes. Thank you, that's, that's all.
Anybody else? Counselor? You're good, Dave. Now I'm actually much more secure about, I'll be back to the, Counselor Conamara?
Yeah, I, I'm just very moved by um, the testimony of whatever it is about, um, you know, the zoning and the, and the rebuild and the stress around that and there were, you know, there were some of the things I could, I could definitely relate to and um, I just, you know, I, I feel like I want to just analyze this for a minute, so with this, with this group. What I, what I hear is there's two, there's two separate issues. One is my ability to do what I want to do with my property after this disaster and that's what this addressed, right? This is addressed of my ability to build my house back the way it was, even though it's not conforming. And um, and then, then there was the idea of what other people are allowed to do around me. And um, sometimes, and I maybe mentioned this, but sometimes I get the, the idea that, that people think the city has a lot of control over what happens, how people decide to go. When, you know, this is private development and people make, you know, their own decisions, they have to be in accord with whatever zoning is in place, but you know, there's, as far as density, I think there probably has almost been, um, you know, the ability, for example, to build a duplex in there. And then before the, the zoning change in twenty nineteen, and I might be wrong about that in this particular area, but when the tightening up was basically not allowing um, a, a single, a, a single family home. So, um, I think that, you know, just the fact that people can build a certain way doesn't mean they weren't able to build another way. Um, so those were some of the thoughts that I'm, I'm not sure if that's right, the right one I think about, that I'd love to have a little feedback from this group. And also whether the city could maybe do a better job of, um, there's one thing to educate the residents, but I think it's also very important to educate real estate, the people, the professionals, um, the real estate agents, the, you know, people don't necessarily read their mail or understand, um, and studying comes in there, but if, you know, I think everybody looking to sell a house or buy a house is going to spend some time in a conversation with a professional in, in that arena, or at least a friend who knows real estate agent. And I think it's really important that that information is correct or people are, you know, sent, sent, talked to your client or whatever. Um, I think we can do a better job of educating um our professional community. Uh, I mean, the elders definitely know what's going on, but most people aren't, aren't really talking to the elders, in my experience.
I did want to add a little context in defense of staff just a little bit. Um, there were two measure fifties that went out on, on this item, so every single, every single person in town got two messages over the course of what was a very long process um, uh, of amending the codes. And um, I don't want to diminish her experience of all, because I have, I have a property in this same type of zoning and um, um, it, you know, you, you are right in that some of, some of what was allowed in high density, which uh, her property was in high density before, it's what's, what has changed is just some of the standards, what changed in twenty nineteen, which is some of the standards in high density. And, um, but prior to that, that change, there were other density rules that would have been, would have been allowed over the order that were similar. And the two changes I can think of that are more significant were um, um, we put a, a minimum on the, on the density rule, we, um, the duplex rule that she just said too, and I think we also raised the maximum height a little bit. Um, but I, I, I want to say that because I think that, you know, the staff um did all of the things that you do when you do this kind of um code change and it was a process that was in progress um when the fire happened. Um, and it was just when, it was, it was not unique for the fire, it was not one of those situations where, oh my god, the fire happened, let's change the code. It was a completion of a job that had been, I think, eighteen months long altogether. Um, so one thing that I, I, I want to close by saying, I just wanted, I wanted to say that in the moment, you know, that, um, but I, I also am so compassionate about her experience. It's, it's been so hard if you want property in, in your burn scar to kind of settle with, how this impacted everything. Uh, but one thing I do want to say is that, you know, I, if there's anything that we can take away from what she said, um, that would, um, that would improve what I think is a good standard now, um, I, I, I would hope we would try to do that and I appreciate your comments for that reason alone. Uh, but I would also say that the staff did everything they were supposed to do.
You know, in general, I'm really excited about, you know, as the past is supposed to open up this coming year, as the number of real companies we have going on slows down. It is something I worked on in the hosting format and that was how can we help interpret the government language for folks to understand? So land use regulations, there are strict requirements and so how we say things is really important. And that's why we got Dave House in the best connection, saying things the right way. Um, but I think there's room for us to also include summary sections to help folks who don't deal with language code day in, day out, to be able to understand the implications for them. And that's always working in Congress, it's not government's conflict, um, it's something that I look forward to working on as the past allows.
Counselor Conamara?
Yeah, I'll add to that, I think the, just because your, your neighbor had the single family homes, to understand that all of a sudden zoning changed, it might be helpful to understand that before the zoning changed, these were all the possibilities. Could have been this, could have been a two-story, it could have been this, and then it changed, so now it is different, it, it does allow larger, but it wasn't like before, it was only single. So people just kind of get an idea of, um, you know, the possibilities and what really changed. This will, I think it would feel less stark. And, and, and the other thing that I think that a lot of people feel that, that this change in certain, their properties less valuable, and I, and I mentioned that, I think that, um, for many, um, the value of a land has, has increased. Um, so anyway, that's just some of the things I think that might help create um more perspective um around these things. And, and hopefully just that, that better understanding will just um make people feel like they're, they're more in control.
The train is left to station, but in nineteen eighty-nine, what was high density, looks like medium density today, you know, and that was, that's, this is not the first time we've encountered this, this um perception that, that I lived in medium density housing and suddenly I'm in high density. It's just that the, the minimum density has changed and in my time, it's changed twice. Um, and I, since nineteen eighty-nine, there may even be another change in there somewhere. So, um, but boy, that's, I, the summary idea of that kind of complexity is really, I'm glad to have a chance to talk about it. It was hard to hear that, both from the technical standpoint of somebody who's served on the planet since two thousand eight, really, and um, and then also um, in what capacity or another, and then also um, just as, you know, a neighbor and um, who, yeah, lost, lost a woman in the fire. Um, okay. Are there any other discussion points for item number twelve, other business or future agenda items? You know what, really quickly, can we make sure she knows, I felt terrible that I, um, will you make sure, can we make sure that she knows um when this item comes back upon the agenda? Just, just as a follow-up for my faux pas of dropping her speaker request form, thank you. She didn't have a number on it and the, the title on it was different, so I was kind of hurt. I mean, I sort of knew what she, it's, but. Um, all right, the next item is written communications, there are none, so if there's nothing else, we'll go ahead and enter this meeting at twenty-two. Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
[inaudible]
Hopefully that's not the end of high-dragging our city's [inaudible].
I'm going to let you run that.
Well, you know, the, it's not even about issues, it's about [inaudible].
I think so.
I want to [inaudible].
Always.
You know, like there's work in pictures.
Something that everyone has, so.
Yeah, good.
I think that seems, you know, the [inaudible] communication with the city residents, I just heard about the communication by the state, telling us to make packs of registration [inaudible].
Maybe [inaudible].
I know, that's been nice.
Now, [inaudible] the whole [inaudible] conversation, we had done that.
Oh, you mean that, on that item?
That ORF, I had it.
He's still [inaudible].
Now, hey, thanks, thanks for [inaudible].
I'm glad you had the [inaudible].
Yeah, is it like an agenda or something or?
Well, it's a short-term only.
Yeah.
How did you find it?
I know, we're here.
Oh, he found it like, almost on your [inaudible].
Your, your words are being told, Dave.
Yes, emphasizing that, underlying it all.
So that value has gone into last, just to make.
I know, I don't know.
I mean, we're, we're talking about, just letting you go around, thank you.
I mean, we're, we sent out the hundred and sixty six [inaudible].
Also have a claims [inaudible].
Well, I'm [inaudible].
I stand up with the [inaudible].